I’m going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon is absent. Gorman.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy is absent. Worsami.
President.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have all members present. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I’ve got an addition to the agenda, so I’m going to move to include a resolution of the City of Minneapolis Mayor and City Council. Councilmember Glidden, you want to take over the chair while I read this?
Yes, Madam Chair. And I will call on Council President Johnson.
Okay. I’m going to move to amend the agenda, and I’m going to move to amend it, and I want to take care of this at the beginning of the meeting, so our guests do not have to stay for our whole meeting. It’s a resolution of the Mayor and the City Council about Parkinson’s Disease, and asking for designating the month of April 2014 as Parkinson’s Awareness Month. And we’ve been joined today by Julie Steen and Eileen Smith, Executive Director, and then also Board President. Why don’t you stand up and just give us a wave here? Thank you for joining us. And I’m just, I’m going to read parts of the resolution, then we’ll act on the resolution at the end of the agenda under Resolutions. And it talks about whereas Parkinson’s Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, according to the Parkinson’s Action Network, Parkinson’s Disease Foundation, and many other organizations, National Institute of Health, affects more than 1 million Americans who’ve been diagnosed with the disease, and it was the foundation, National Parkinson’s Foundation was founded in 1957. It is the only organization maintaining a singular focus on improving the quality of care for those living with Parkinson’s Disease, and has an extensive network of chapters, support groups, and centers of excellence all around the United States. And Minnesota ranks third among all states in the nation per capita for those living with Parkinson’s Disease. I suppose part of that is because we live long. Minnesota and the surrounding communities, the National Parkinson’s Foundation drives awareness and outreach by bringing together thought leaders on Parkinson’s Disease as members of its clinic advisory board under the leadership of Dr. Martha Nance of the Park-Nicholitz-Struthers Parkinson Center, which has provided training to hospital neurologists, physicians, pharmacists, nurses, and rehabilitation therapists to improve patient outcomes for those living with Parkinson’s. And the National Minnesota Parkinson’s Foundation funds outreach, education, support groups, and families, including its unique respite care grant, which reaches families throughout the Midwest. And in the coming year, the National Parkinson’s Foundation Minnesota will announce new grant opportunities to support individuals and families in earlier stages of diagnosis. And so April has been proclaimed Worldwide Parkinson’s Awareness Month to help promote awareness of the need for a multidisciplinary approach that includes local wellness and caregiver groups, as well as the need for increased research, education, and support to address the devastating effects of Parkinson’s Disease. And the National Foundation will hold a fundraiser on April 15th to highlight its work through outreach, education, and to support research initiatives, and eventually find a cure for this disease. And as part of that celebration, they have asked for lighting of the I-35W Bridge. And so that lighting is to commemorate the lives of those who have been impacted by Parkinson’s, and as a visible sign of hope for the community, for a future where Parkinson’s Disease is no longer affects families and individuals. So now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council hereby proclaim April 2014 as Parkinson’s Disease Awareness Month throughout the city of Minneapolis, and urge all residents to participate in activities and events which support the fight against Parkinson’s Disease, and to support efforts which aid and assist individuals and families living with Parkinson’s Disease. So we’ll add this to our agenda, and then act on it at the end of the agenda. Thank you very much for joining us today. So that item has been added.
Thank you, and I will return, as there’s no action anticipated, return the chair to Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item, excuse me, then, on the agenda, I’m sorry, let’s see. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am so sorry, I saw these nice young people here this morning. So would you please stand up? These are student council members of Nellie Stone Johnson School, and they’ve joined us, and they’re probably going to stay through part of our meeting, I guess, but they’re taking a tour of City Hall. So thank you so very much for joining us this morning. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Student council representatives. All right. Now, next item, or the item then is the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. So we’ll put the resolution under Resolutions. Next item is the acceptance of the minutes of the reg—
And I will—
I’m sorry?
Go ahead.
Acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7th, 2014.
And I’ll move acceptance.
Been moved, and is there a second?
Aye.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item is referral of petitions and communications and reports of the city officers to proper council committees and departments.
Move referral.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the reports of the regular committees, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President— Lilligren, excuse me, Glidden. I talked to Councilmember Lilligren last night. Councilmember Glidden.
All right. Bless from the past, and that’s a compliment. So I hope I can do just as good a job as Councilmember, Council Vice President Lilligren. So we have one item for adoption, but it is a significant item. It is adoption of our Minneapolis vision, values, and goals. And along with adoption of the vision values and goals, we are also adopting several staff directions for the City Coordinator’s Office. I will not read them all, but they relate to developing measurements, engaging with stakeholders, reporting regularly to the City Council on progress around the city goals. And I will note that one of the actions is to propose creation of a racial equity action plan, and we will have further reports back to us on how that might take place from the City Coordinator’s Office and other related departments. So I will move approval of this item, along with the related staff directions.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on any of the items on that report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee has 10 items to bring forward this morning. I’m just going to note two of them. Item number seven is improving the designation of Ryan Companies as the exclusive developer on Block 1 Liner Parcel. This is not a redevelopment agreement, it’s simply assigning them exclusive development rights going forward. And item number 10 is approving about $300,000 in funding for street outreach to St. Stephen’s homeless outreach programs. With that, I’ll move items 1 through 10 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Anyone want to pull anything off, or any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. The next item we have is the Election Committee Report, and that committee is chaired by Council member Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. We have only two items that were on the agenda. The first is the 2014 special election. It’s allowing our clerk to have additional— Excuse me, it’s the election judges. So they’re allowed to get the election judges, and if there are any additional election judges that are needed, they can recruit those as well. And the second item, one is in regard to the clarification of the definition of tabulation center, and the second is amending the process of mathematical elimination. I would move the full recommendation of the committee.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election and Rules Committee Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Energy, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing five items forward for approval and consideration. The first is to approve the reappointment of the Commissioner of Health, the Director of the Department of Health, Gretchen Musikant, to the appointed position for a two-year term beginning January 2nd, 2014. The second is a resolution approving appointments to our Public Health Advisory Committee. This would be Sean Q. from Ward 4, Karen Sotterberg from Ward 7, Dr. Rebecca Thoman from Ward 13, Linda Brant as the Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Representative, Tara Jensen Ward 5, Dr. Happy Reynolds Cook Ward 6, Abdallah Sheikh Ward 8, and Joseph Kalanani, a member-at-large. The third item is to authorize a five-year affiliation agreement with the University of Minnesota to provide medical rotations for them through our school-based clinic program. The fourth item is a passage of a resolution supporting participation in Earth Hour, March 29, 2014, 8:30 to 9:30 p.m. Everyone’s invited to turn off their lights and all their electrical items. And the final item is authorizing application for a three-year grant from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. We originally approved this at our committee for $750,000, and then we were informed that we could actually be entitled to more funds, so we are applying for $1,050,000, which is the Ways and Means motion, and I will be moving the Ways and Means report on that item. I’ll move all five of those forward for recommendation.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the entire Health, Energy, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off, or speak on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item for approval, and it is approving an amendment to our 2014 Minneapolis federal agenda, adding language to the Policy Initiative section regarding the federal role in affordable and workforce housing, and I’ll move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the IGR report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson. There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Council President. We have two items for approval. The first item is to approve the Executive Committee’s reappointment of John Friedel to the appointed position of Fire Chief for a term of two years, beginning January 2nd, 2014. And number two is to approve the Executive Committee’s reappointment of Velma Corbell to the appointed position of Director of Civil Rights for a two-year term, beginning January 2nd, 2014. And I would like to move for approval for number one, but I’d like to pull number two for discussion.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, number one, and number two pulled off for discussion. So on item one, is there any discussion? Oh, I’m sorry, Madam—
Madam Mayor. I have trouble with that, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. I’d like to comment on item one, if I could.
Please do.
This is the reappointment of Chief Friedel, and there was a great conversation about this, and I just wanted to reiterate my support for him, the strong work and leadership he has done in the department, and his ability to move us ahead as we are dealing with our workforce planning, as we are diversifying the department, but especially as we are doing emergency response services and fire suppression. His leadership there over many, many years has been incomparable, and I urge your support. And also, I wanted to take a moment, because I missed on the health agenda Ms. Musikant, who is our— who is now, with your vote, reappointed as our Health Department, the head of our Health Department, and she too has done incredible work for the city for many years. Some of the best equity work happening at the city has been coming out of the Health Department, doing health disparities work, which has made a big difference for the entire city. And so I thank you for your support for Ms. Musikant, and I urge your support for Chief Friedel. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any further discussion on item one? Seeing none, I just want to briefly comment, too. I just want to thank Chief Friedel for being willing to serve, and thank our fire department for the great service that they do for our citizens every day. I’m just always amazed with their kindness and professionalism, and, you know, whether they’re fighting a fire or taking care of someone in an emergency medical situation. So thank you very much, and Chief, I think you’re going to be fine. So clerk, call the roll on public safety, item number one.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. Congratulations. Next item then is the— approve the Executive Committee’s reappointment of Velma Corbell to the appointed position of the Director of Civil Rights for a two-year term, beginning January 2nd, 2014. Someone want to move that?
I will move approval.
Councilmember Gordon, thank you. That item is moved and in front of us. Is there any discussion? Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, as I did in committee, reiterate my support for the reappointment of Velma Corbell for civil rights. Her record of getting incredible results from a department that for years had been underperforming, much to the consternation of the community, you know, has been well documented, and we’ve had many conversations about it here at the city. And she is poised to help lead us through some of the crucial equity work that we have been— all been talking about and eager to get started on, and she is one of the leaders in the city who has worked hard on this issue for years, helped us as policymakers walk through it, and she’s also been a leader with department heads, helping everybody in the city think differently about what it means to have equity in the city, both in the city enterprise and the city as a whole. I think—I look forward to working with her on those issues for the next two years, and I ask that you all move to reappoint her.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Council President. We went through a public hearing where there were some concerns that were brought up by folks from AFSMI and former employees, and I’m really concerned that this reappointment will just really go against, you know, one of the values that we have as a city, which is to encourage or help our employees, or, you know, boost their morale, and make this a good place to work. And I guess, you know, I should say, I mean, I used to work at the Civil Rights Department, and a lot of these complaints are not a surprise to me. I think that the way that we’re going about this might be the wrong thing, and I just want to, you know, let folks know that I think I would encourage folks to vote no on this. You know, I just believe that, you know, what we’re doing here could affect us for the next several years, and, you know, for myself, I mean, I just think, at some level, we talk about a civil rights department that has, you know, 60 years of history. I mean, this civil rights department was a department that was created by then-Mayor Hubert Humphrey back in the, you know, late ‘40s, and, you know, it has a lot of things that people want to believe in, it has all the things that we want to believe in, and sometimes maybe we haven’t paid attention enough to this department, but I think, I mean, it’s time for us to do so. And, you know, I think, I mean, what I hear from the civil rights department, from current employees, from past employees, frightens me a bit. I think the irony of a civil rights department that operates in some ways to, you know, violate some laws, labor or employment-related, is really just disappointing to me, and I think that, you know, we’re going against our values by doing this. You know, I understand, we talk about equity as though it’s a big deal, and, you know, we look at Minneapolis, and it’s home to some of the largest gaps between communities of color and white communities in terms of income, healthcare, education, employment, and homeownership. And one way to level the playing field is to have a strong civil rights department that is doing exactly what we want it to do. And, you know, I think for too long, we’ve been neglecting this, and I just think that for us to really have a strong department is really important for me, and I think, you know, a change in leadership is necessary at this point. You know, I might just be the only person, but I do feel strongly about that. You know, just recently, the mayor pledged, under her administration, that she would not that, you know, they would not have to worry about a hostile and unfair work environment. And, you know, the mayor, quoting her, said, “As the mayor of this city, I want to reassure all employees that 100%—that we are 100% committed to providing a respectful, positive work environment for everyone. Moreover, all employees must feel that they can come forward with concerns, issues, without fear of retaliation. That is the policy of this city, and it will be reinforced. City leaders are held to—are to be held to the very highest standards of conduct. That is not only my expectation, but my requirement for all department heads and leaders. Employees are entitled to no less.” And, you know, I believe the mayor is right on this. What she’s essentially saying is that we’re better than this, we can do better than this, and fixing the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights is the right thing to do. I believe that, you know, with the civil rights departments, if we right-size fund it and, you know, have different management, we will have a better department, and that Minneapolis can begin to approach and realize, you know, through a reimagine and reinvigorate an MDCR, the equity that we seek. And, you know, I believe that if we’re sincere about that objective, we should give the Civil Rights Department the time, attention, and resources that it needs to become the protector and enforcer that we need. And I just believe that, you know, this vote should be a no vote. You know, I’m just going to quote another person. In 2010, our former mayor, Ryback, said about Corbell’s initial appointment to the MDCR Director, “Expectations have to be raised, and it is not okay for this department to just be okay.” And I will leave it at that, but I encourage my colleagues to vote no on this.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues voting yes for the mayor, and for Ms. Corbell and her work. That being said, based on what I know and the facts that I’ve seen, I can’t—in good conscience, vote yes. That being said, I— assuming that Ms. Corbell is reappointed, I do hope to have favorable relations, as well as work with her in the future, but my vote will be no.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues who may not be supporting this right now, and Councilmember Yang and Frye. And this is actually because of the work, especially, I think, that Councilmember Yang has done. I learned a lot between my yes vote at Executive Committee and my yes vote at the Public Safety Committee, and I think that we all learned a lot, and I’m hoping that we learn from this experience. I have had the advantage of working with other civil rights directors, and also with Ms. Corbell. I’m supporting the reappointment, but I’m doing it with some reservations, and I voiced some of these at the committee, and most of those reservations came out of the discussions. But there were also some other issues that happened in the past that I had concerns about, and this included the Civilian Review Authority and the way that process was done, but I also recognized that that was done under policymaker leadership, and that that was done in one way. And we— I also heard, there was a— there was a missing piece there that came up, which had to do with community engagement. So actually, when that came to the committee, I moved a staff direction that required some community engagement meetings, and I believe that Ms. Corbell learned from that experience, and the department did, and in discussions with her, some of the topics were, community engagement is a piece that could use some improvement. I also recognize that really lots of strides were made in the department under her leadership, and I think others do. We had a real problem with a backlog of complaints that weren’t getting looked at. The Civil Rights Department, I think, was seen probably as one of the more dysfunctional departments, and it had a ways to go. And maybe Mayor Ryback, when he said, “Expectations have to be raised,” I think we did raise expectations. And I think in some very striking ways, those raised expectations were met. We had been waiting for years for a delayed disparity study that was completed effectively and efficiently. A study we were depending on so that we could keep setting our goals for hiring and our whole contract compliance division. We also did see the department work through that backlog of complaints, in large measure because of process improvements that the rank-and-file down there developed, and they worked incredibly hard. I also believe that we’ve seen lots of improvements in the department, and this is from reports that I’ve heard of people who’ve worked over the years with civil rights, and I have to tell you, former employees that we heard from, current employees who spoke with us, I think we saw that there are really some incredible people down there, committed and dedicated, passionate and professional and effective employees down there. I would say more committed, and maybe more passionate and effective than they’ve been in the past in the Civil Rights Department, and some of that credit has to go to the management level for being able to attract those people there. I also think we heard some serious issues and concerns that need to be looked into, and I’ve heard commitments from the mayor, I’ve heard commitments from Ms. Corbell, I’ve heard commitments from the union. I think people are ready to get in there and drill down on those and tackle them, and if there is improvements that can be made, I think that we can make them. I’m very concerned if we—if there isn’t a reappointment, that some of the stuff that I’ve worked hardest on and am most passionate about might also be delayed and derailed. I have to say that when Ms. Corbell came in, I’d been working a lot on racial equity, especially equity in employment. Fortunately, the council had allowed me to help start a task force with CPED. We were working on that.[1659.82] Ms. Corbell got involved in that. She attended those meetings, she was effective in doing that, and she was a, was a good partner in raising that issue and helping educate others, including business leaders downtown, philanthropic leaders, institutions, that this was a key and pivotal issue. And I think we are poised right now to take dramatic steps forward on that. The Civil Rights Department has also definitely led on our effort to develop our racial equity toolkit, which has been a key priority for me, to see if we can't get our own house in order here in City Hall. And so I'm concerned that we'd lose some of that momentum and we'd lose some of those connections and that relationship. So I'll be, I'll be supporting her. If, if, if the reappointment goes through, I also have a staff direction that I'll move afterwards, that I'll speak to later.
Councilmember Canno?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I just wanted to share with the public and with my fellow colleagues that I've given this a lot of thought, and it hasn't been an easy decision for me. I will be voting yes today, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. So I've had the opportunity to look at the reports that were circulated in City Council and by Communities United Against Police Brutality. I've listened to my colleagues and had discussions about this with different people. I met with Velma Corbell personally and talked to the mayor a few times on the phone. So what I want to talk about first is acknowledge the difficulty in coming in as a leader, as a woman of color, and as a change agent, to make things more effective. I have been in that position myself. And, and when you're driving an agenda for change, not everyone's gonna be happy. So it's a very difficult position to be in, and even the most sweet, loving employees will have some issues. At the same time, there has to be opportunity to change the pace of the work and to, to not stay in that mode of change agent all the time, because it does quell a little creativity in staff and in the department. And so we have to be able to shed that, that perspective. We have to be able to shed that personality and that sort of status and really allow for, for the work to unfold itself and for the leadership from the bottom up to rise. With that, I will also share that last week, we met at the Organizing Apprenticeship Project with about 20-plus organizations, who talked a lot about the Civil Rights Department. And they expressed, like Councilmember Cam Gordon said, a deep desire for more transparency and community engagement from the city. In this, in this discussion, there were several council members there, including Council, Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden. And we really discussed about how some of these racial equity issues should not be the sole burden of the Civil Rights Department to deliver on. It is really an enterprise-wide effort that we need to roll up our sleeves and engage with every department, from public works to communications, to neighborhood and community relations, to, you know, our 911 and the 311 operations, to looking at how the city coordinator is helping advance this agenda throughout all the departments. So I want to acknowledge that some of the issues that are coming up symbolize a broader concern about how we as a city are tackling this as, as a comprehensive unit of, of work. And really, you know, we have to look at issues of institutional racism, and we have to look at questions that I've raised with some of my council colleagues about whether or not the Civil Rights Department is positioned to be successful. So regardless of leadership, regardless of who comes in, regardless of the supervisors and the managers that are there, how are we supporting this department to really be able to hold itself, its own institution accountable? And I think that's a really deep question that we need to, you know, dig deeply on and figure out. I also want to acknowledge that in this conversation, it has come up that it is not the sole responsibility of Ms. Corbell to lead the department. But there's also some other things that we need to do with the managers and the supervisors that report to her. And so I just want to use this opportunity as, as a call to action for the supervisors and those managers to really stand up and, and make this work with us, make this happen. The challenge is two years, right? We have two years, to really show the community that we can turn things around. I'm also very happy to have seen Mayor Hodges' email and communication about sitting down with Sarah Maxwell from AFSMI and having a conversation where there has been some issues exposed and some solutions that have been discussed about how we can move forward to improve relationships between the workers and the management. That's a really important thing for me, and I'm really looking forward to supporting Velma Corbell and AFSMI to improve these conditions for the workers, because I do believe that there's a way. I think we can work together. I want to help elevate the voices of AFSMI workers, and I want to make sure that you see me as an ally in this work to do that. And again, this is a two-year, a two-year challenge. I also want to share that some friends of mine who went to the conference that Council Vice President Glidden went to this week, talked about maybe changing the name of the department to the Office of Human Rights, Civil Rights, and Racial Equity. So again, connecting that conversation to a broader look at how this department can really be positioned to lead and deliver for us as a city. I, I want to reiterate that at the end of two years, my expectations that I spoke to Velma about, and that I've sort of been working on since, I worked for Councilmember Robert Lilligrin back in 2011, is I want to see more Latino hires in the department, not just bilingual folks, but I want to see bicultural individuals who come from those communities who reflect our people and can help diversify the workforce of the city. I want to make sure that, you know, Organizing Apprenticeship Projects call on ensuring that we're meeting our goals or exceeding our goals around minority and women-owned contract businesses are met and moving forward, that we have this improved work environment, that we also look at the outcomes and how things are going with Office of Police Conduct Review, and at the end of six months, have a report back about how those things are moving, and have the courage to restructure or redo that process again if we have to. That's better than just keeping the course. One of my mentors, well, you know, she doesn't know me, but I know her, Melissa Harris-Parris, which I watch on YouTube and I look, you know, she gave a speech to Will Leslie, the Women's College, and she talked about thin and thick leaders, and that's about, you know, courage versus not courage. And being a leader that really listens, learns, and adjusts, not just stays the course for the hell of staying the course, but really being able to engage with folks and talk about how this is going to change their perspective and their leadership. And lastly, Velma and I talked about having the city adopt a racial equity framework. And so I'm really looking forward to figuring out what that looks like, how we can push that together and help other departments deliver on these racial equity goals, which we have a clear directive from the community to solve, and I think we have the political will to do it. So with that, thank you, colleagues, for listening, and I appreciate the public and the residents for understanding and listening to my vote today.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I really want to acknowledge the fact that by all accounts, our Civil Rights Department was in disarray and very dysfunctional until the appointment of our current Director, Velma Corbell. And there's little doubt that Velma came in, cleaned up the department, and got it running again. And that's a pretty big accomplishment. However, these allegations that were raised at the hearing are very serious, very serious allegations from both former employees who have worked under that leadership in the department and from the union, which represents the employees as well. And frankly, I think it is a little bit insultive and dismissive to say that those concerns are because not everyone is happy with decisions. When people say that a work environment is hostile, that there's retaliation, some serious allegations like that, we need to listen, and we need to take that very seriously. Because we have in this city incredibly professional, hardworking, passionate, amazing people who every day do such great work for this city. And they know the difference between a decision that they disagree with and a hard work environment that isn't fair to them. So I've done my homework. I have enough information to know that there are problems with the work environment after listening to all sides of this. And it is very, very important for me that we make sure we're doing right by our employees. We actually went through the process of drafting goals and values for our city. And if you look at the draft goals, one of the goals is employees are supported. Another is we work in an open, ethical, and transparent manner. And I, actually, I want to thank our mayor for her leadership, because after concerns were raised about Rocco Forte, she did come out and say that we hold all of our leaders in this city to the highest standards, and that employees are entitled to no less. And I believe she is doing that, and she stands behind that. And that's why I'm happy that she has pledged to investigate these allegations, and that's something that I wholeheartedly support. And that's why I believe that we need that information back in order to make an educated decision on this. And that's why I would actually move to postpone reappointment until we have investigation results back for the council.
Councilmember Johnson has moved to postpone.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on that motion? Seeing no discussion, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So we're back to the main motion. That motion fails. Back to the main motion. Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I am supporting this reappointment of Velma Corbell, and I just wanted to speak to this for a little bit. I appreciate the words of our mayor that articulate the reasons for her moving forward with this appointment. It is a big-picture look that I know the mayor needs to take of where our city is going, what's happening in the department, and how to move it forward. So I just want to say I appreciate that, and I appreciate, too, that the mayor is the one who gets to make the appointment. We don't have a process where the city council kind of back and forth on the appointment. We vote yes or no. And I just say that to kind of reiterate, since there are a lot of community members watching this, that there is a certain process for how we move forward with department heads in the city, and that's part of the process. And so I appreciate the mayor's hard work and, and thinking through this, because this is very important to her tenure and moving forward as the mayor. And one of the top things that the mayor has talked about all the way through her election, and from day one since she started as a mayor, was the importance of moving forward with a strong racial equity agenda, that that is her number one. And I've heard her also in the community, and that is always what she says. And so I know that she is thinking very carefully about how we move forward and how this reappointment process is part of that ability to move forward. I have, you know, it's kind of interesting. I've told other folks that while I don't know that I've had individual relationships with members within the Civil Rights Departments, the staff, kind of as an entity, the Civil Rights Department is an entity that I've worked with more than any other entity, just as a, you know, a person working in the city. And this is a department that, over the decades, over the decades, has had a lot of issues. And a lot of issues that I think languished and didn't go corrected. And, and I do have to say, from my observation, with Ms. Corbell's leadership, there have been some major improvements. And I just say a leader is one piece of that package, and I want to recognize that, that this is about working together with a team, with many dedicated staff who are making changes that are needed in the department. But there are very significant changes that have happened within the department since she has taken over and with her leadership, and that's just a fact. And I'm not saying that the department is perfect, and I don't think any leader would say that they're at a perfect place. And so I want to acknowledge, too, that there's, there's a ways to go. I appreciate that within the city, there are certain ways that we move forward and, and work to investigate claims that have been brought forward. And so I don't want to say more than that, because we are delving into what are confidential personnel issues. But we need to make sure that when we move forward, that we follow our processes, that we make sure those processes are followed. And I just will say to all that I feel with utmost confidence that there are processes that are being followed right now to move forward and do things within our city process. I also want to say that I appreciate that the mayor and Ms. Corbell have agreed and is, was referenced on, on how to move forward and support the department as a whole on working through workplace issues, and that will be done in partnership with AFSMI. And I just want to say that that is also something that was important to me in moving forward today, and I'm happy that those partnerships have been acknowledged, and there's a plan for moving forward. So again, I support this reappointment. I, I think that it is important for us to move forward and, and vote yes, and that's what my vote will be today.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. And I really appreciate the words of all my colleagues and their decisions on this, as has been reiterated, it is always difficult on these kind of decisions. So with that, I, while I cannot support in good faith reappointment at this time, I do support the work of the department, the ongoing work of Ms. Corbell, and the especially leadership of our mayor, who I know feels very strongly about all the great work that is in the pipeline within that department, and will be making sure that our employees are taken care of, because I know she takes that very seriously. So I really appreciate all the conversations we have had around this, and I also want to thank the individuals who were courageous enough to come forward and speak at a public hearing about their experiences, and it is very hard to do that. It's hard enough to sit up here and talk about something when you are in conflict. It's even harder if you've never stood in front of the council before, especially when your reputation and relationships are on the line. And I think that's an incredibly powerful thing for folks to do. And so I really appreciate them coming forward and standing up for their colleagues as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to support the nomination today, and I've been here for a while. And I, I think this, the leader of this department and the leader of the police department are the two positions in our city that have really the most challenges and less unanimity in appointments over the, over the years. And so I respect everyone's opinion here, and, you know, we will move on, and I'm sure Ms. Corbell will continue to work with those of us who support her and those of us who don't. The work is too important to do otherwise. I, I just think that it is, these two fields, police work and civil rights, are areas that are, that are fraught with conflict. And that is, provides for citizens that sometimes go away unhappy, they've been harmed, they come to us for, for redress, for help, trying to solve their problems, and sometimes, sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. So there, there will be people that, that feel that they haven't been helped, people that feel that they have. And the other thing, I think that that kind of an environment, just, and police work is the same way. You know, people call because they're in an emergency situation, sometimes they're happy, you don't get there fast enough, there's just so many things. So people will come away happy or unhappy. And I think that's really hard for employees. I have to say that. That is a very, very hard environment for people to work in. They feel like their work is criticized, you know, they're not, people aren't happy with what they do. And it, it, it provides for a stress on the employee that perhaps is not found in other places. So I appreciate also the input that we've had from employees. I think the ideas about moving forward with working together more closely will provide answers and help for some of the situations that, that happen. But I, I want to commend the director for the direction she's taken, the department, the professionalism. I remember meeting with the folks from AFSMI, and they talked about the, some of the new hires in the, in the Civil Rights Department and how professional they were and what great work they were doing. And so I, I so value this work that our employees do, and so I'm delighted that we're, we're going to be moving forward in a way that will bring management and employees closer together in this department. Because it is a really important department for our city and for our citizens. And Councilmember Yang said we need to resource this department. That's part of the problem that we've had, too. We've under-resourced this department. And, you know, expected the workload to stay the same and do it with fewer people, that provides stress on people. So I think it's a legitimate look that we need to do in light of the budget about what we're asking this department to do. So I'm hopeful this will pass today, and I'm looking forward to working with both Ms. Corbell and our employees in the Civil Rights Department, and making sure that it's an effective department for our city, for the people that work there, and for the citizens that they serve. Clerk will call the roll on number two, Public Safety.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Nay.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Canno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Worsami?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
That item is adopted. Congratulations, Ms. Corbell. Councilmember Gordon, you had a motion?
I do, thank you, Madam President. I will read it and then speak to it if there's a second. So this is a motion to direct the city coordinator to do three things. First, to consult with AFSMI representatives to consider the reinstatement or creation of a new Civil Rights Department Labor Management Committee. And two, to work with the mayor's office, the civil rights director, and if deemed appropriate, outside management consulting services to evaluate and, as warranted, improve management practices in the Civil Rights Department related to employee satisfaction and maintaining a healthy workplace environment. And three, report back to the executive committee on the status of these efforts by July 1, 2014.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Gordon, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it's my intention with this to actually be supporting and encouraging and give the council an opportunity to directly do that as a body. Efforts that I think are already underway and the intentions that we've already heard expressed from the mayor, the union, and from the director. I also think it will be important to set in place a opportunity for the executive committee to look at this again. I think that's the appropriate place for this to go. My hope is that this might even give those people who didn't support the appointment a chance to, to come together. a chance to come together, and that we can come together as a council and at least support this, I think, positive step, helping us move in an appropriate direction after all of what we've learned through this discussion.
Councilmember Reich?
Just a clarification. Councilmember Glidden had mentioned some work that's underway, seems consistent with this. Is this consistent with the work that's underway that you described earlier in the debate?
Councilmember Glidden, would you like to respond?
Right, I think that's actually probably the mayor's response. I think it is, yeah.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, I can, I mean, as you were mentioning before, the two departments that tend to be most at odds in these things are also the two departments that report directly to the mayor. And so, which I take on gladly, actually. And so this, the email that I sent yesterday referred to the fact that, you know, first and foremost, I strongly support Director Corbell. And I thank you all for supporting her as well. And she is now the Civil Rights Director for another two years. And so I am, I am happy with, you know, I am fine with asking these questions, because these are questions, as I said in the email yesterday, I am already asking. I think these are in addition to any necessary steps that need to be taken regarding, you know, testimony that was given, but that these are, you know, complementary to any of those steps that would need taking. But I see these as supporting a department that, given the recent debate, aside from anything else, given the recent debate, would leave some folks uneasy, and knowing that the department can get some support in moving forward together, I think, is appropriate.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. That motion is added then. All right. And next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation and Public Works Committee is forwarding 16 items for consideration today. Item one is to approve the Executive Committee's reappearance of Steve Cockey to the appointed position of City Engineer, Director of Public Works for a two-year term beginning January 2nd, 2014. Item two is the Boulevard Vegetation Passage and Ordinance to amend Title 17, Chapter 427 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to streets and sidewalks. Item three is the Fourth Avenue Street Resurfacing Project Passage Resolution designating the location for that project and the cost estimates, and directing the city engineer to prepare proposed special assessments. And that public hearing will be May 13th, 2014. Item four is the Hay Northwest Franklin Hall Lynn Park Area Street Resurfacing Project, again, to put that in motion for the proposed assessments, and having a hearing May 13, 2014. Item five is LaSalle Avenue Street Resurfacing Project, similar actions regarding the assessments and the public hearing for May 13, 2014. Item six is the LaSalle Avenue Street Reconstruction Project that will go from 12th Street South to 8th Street South, again, setting the improvements proposed, and a hearing for May 13, 2014. Item seven is the Penn Avenue Street Reconstruction Project Phase One Contract Amendment, authorizing increase of contract to Meyer Contracting for $3,648.43 to allow for additional construction contingencies provided as part of the original budget, no additional appropriation required. Item eight is the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge over Burlington Northern Santa Fe Northtown Yard Passage Resolution, Passage of Four Resolutions authorizing the purchase of free parcels, or fee parcels, and acquisition of temporary easements to facilitate the realigned roadway and bridge reconstruction activities, and authorize execution of an access agreement with Minneapolis Park and Rec to allow project-related constructions on their property and right-ofway. Item nine is the TO, TOMCO II Lease Agreement, basically to purchase carbon dioxide unit used at the water softening plant at the expense of $24,500 for the maximum duration of 10 months. Funding is available within the project budget. Early signature of the mayor is requested for that item. The following items are referred reports to Ways and Means Committee. Item 10 is the Penn Avenue South Phase Two Street Reconstruction Project. There are four resolutions associated with that, ordering the work to proceed and adopting assessments, requesting the Board of Investment Taxation to issue and sell assessment bonds for the project, establishing parking restrictions that meet state aid rules, and ordering the abandonment and removal of airways located in the public right-ofway in conflict with the project. Item 11 is the Riverside Extension Street Reconstruction Project, ordering work to proceed, the Board of Investment Taxation to sell assessment bonds, and ordering the abandonment and removal of airways located in the public right-ofway in that conflict with the project. Item 12 is the 5th Street North, 8th Avenue North, and 5th Avenue North, 48th Street East, and the MinDOT 62 Frontage Road South Street Resurfacing Project, proceed with the assessments, and having the resolution of the Board of Investment Taxation to issue and sell assessment bonds for the project. Item 13 is the Loring Park Area South-North Loop Street Resurfacing Project, having that work proceed, adopting special assessments, and Passage Resolution requesting the Board of Investment Taxation to sell assessment bonds for that project. Item 14 is the 2014 Parkway Paving and Parkway Street Lighting Improvement Agreement. Item 15 is the Street Construction Assessment Reductions, Passage of Two Resolutions authorizing Hennepin County Order to Reduce Previously Levied Assessments Against Wagner Partners Limited Partnership and Minnetoka Macuson Company Incorporated. The following items are accepted, low responsive bid of Schaefer Contracting Company, and the low responsive bid of Dresser Trap Rock Incorporated. I forward all these items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the entire Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Oh, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to comment on item one.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
This is the reappearance of Steve Cockey for Public Works Director. And Steve has just done an incredible job in his time. I've worked with him as a city council member and now as mayor, and his responsiveness, his steady hand, his willingness to be personally involved in key city public works issues, and take leadership, as well as be able to translate sometimes between engineers and policymakers, which itself is rare and invaluable. All of these make Steve a great leader. His care and concern about the budget, he's gone above and beyond the call of duty in making sure that he understands the budget and that he is working to find efficiencies, and that he is an innovator in that department as well. All of those speak to the good job that he has done and the good job I feel that he will do, and I ask for your support for his reappearance.
Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Echo everything that the mayor just stated, is absolutely my experience as well with Director Cockey. And with that, I suggest the confidence that many have in many of the things that we want to do vis-à-vis the Transportation and Public Works Division, moving forward with new things that we want to do in the city, new innovation that can be brought to our, the way we collect waste, the way we manage our water, and certainly a topic that's on many people's minds, how we move around the city. I think he's put us in a position to be at the forefront of those conversations, and provides a lot of confidence through those efforts.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, I would echo my colleagues' remarks about Mr. Cockey. And one thing I want to point out, and I just think this is so remarkable, when we talk about diversifying our workforce, one of the professions that is almost devoid of women is engineering. And we are so fortunate in our city, under his leadership, to have a number of professional engineers that are women, including the Deputy Director of the Department, and these very successful, dynamic young women. It's just, it's really a pleasure when you go to present our department to the community, that we are an attractive workplace for young women to come in a profession that they are really, really underrepresented. So I'm always pleased when I see that. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to echo the mayor's words, as well as Councilmember Reich, and Reich's words as well. I'm blown away every single day by the work that they're doing in Public Works. Mr. Cockey and his entire staff are impressive, they're extraordinary, and the level of pride and dedication they devote to their jobs. And I just, just the other day, I was down in the trenches, looking at this sewer system 100 feet down, and I was talking to some of these guys, and they said, "Yeah, you know what? Those guys up top and those women up top that are paving the streets, those are the glory jobs." And it's just funny to think about, because I never thought of those as being necessarily the glory jobs. But maybe to them, when they're 100 feet down, maybe they are. But I'm fully supportive.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that will be given by Councilmember Palmasano this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here are the items of the Ways and Means Committee. The first is a legal settlement. It's a passage of a resolution authorizing settlement in the matter of Jeremy Axel versus the City of Minneapolis. This is an amount of $271,864.78. The second is a Target Center renovation project. It's a passage of a resolution requiring the use of a project labor agreement with the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council for all construction work on the project. The second part of that is to authorize an RFP for a construction manager at Risk Services. The third piece is a bid for the Target Center Domestic Water Supply and Sanitary Drain Pipe Replacement. It's to accept the low bid of Northern Air Corporation for this work. The fourth is Minneapolis Television Network Board Appointments. It's to approve the following city council appointments: Nancy Brown, Seth Goodlaxen, George Norman, and Lawanna Whitmore. Second is to extend the mayoral appointment of Catherine Bishop for a term to expire in January 15, 2018. The fifth item is a Compass Financial System Upgrade to execute one-year contract with ILYNX for senior project management services in the amount of $220,000, and to include an option to renew for up to one additional year. Item number six is a Contract Compliance Software for the Civil Rights Department. It's to extend the contract with B2G Now for three additional years, and to increase that contract amount by $180,000 and update the terms and conditions to current standards. Item number seven is Solid Waste Information System. It's to execute a three-year contract with Ardent Technologies for support, maintenance, and enhancement of our application software in the amount of $450,000, and to include an option to renew up to two additional years. Item number eight is an AmeriCorps Community Technology Empowerment Project. It's to execute the agreement with the St. Paul Neighborhood Network for the 2014 and 2015 program to enable the city to participate in that project. Item number nine is donation of telepresence and video conferencing equipment. It's about accepting a gift from Cisco Systems for the city's IT department. Item number 10 is reappropriation of the 2013 fund balances. This is, this is about rollover of the 2013 appropriation. It will amend the 2014 appropriation resolution to allocate the funds from last year, 2013, of several operating departments as outlined in that resolution. Madam Chair, I move approval of all items.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of the items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one was regarding a sign variance for McDonald's on the 1100 block of University Avenue Northeast. I'll be moving to postpone this item because there's a larger site plan review that is needed. Item number two is 515 on the park, just passage of a resolution amending some easement language. And number three is to pass an ordinance amending Title 20, Chapter 543 of the Minneapolis Code, allowing for on-premise roof signs, two different types of signs depending on the height of buildings, and to return Chapter 520 to the author. Staff determined that no changes was needed to that part of our zoning code. So with that, I'll move items two and three for approval and postpone item one.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender has moved to postpone item one on the zoning and planning report and move items two and three. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick clarification for Councilmember Bender. For item one, it's being postponed for, is it one cycle? Is that what the motion is?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Frye, it will go back to zoning and planning on the next committee meeting.
And that's the entirety of the motion, the entirety of item number one? This is for the McDonald's, adding the additional lane?
Thank you, Council President. And Councilmember Frye, I believe from our city attorney and clerk that it automatically goes back to committee, but I'll let Mr. Casey clarify.
Mr. Carl?
Madam President, if the motion is to postpone, that item would remain at this level with the council. If it is the intent of the chair to reclaim that in committee, the motion should be to remand it back to the ZMP Committee for further work.
No, I keep, I think it makes more sense to postpone the item.
Keep it here. Keep it here?
That works for me.
Okay, all right. So the item then, or the motion then is to postpone item one on the council floor and move forward items two and three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one was regarding a sign variance for McDonald's on the 1100 block of University Avenue Northeast. I'll be moving to postpone this item because there's a larger site plan review that is needed. Item number two is 515 on the park, just passage of a resolution amending some easement language. And number three is to pass an ordinance amending Title 20, Chapter 543 of the Minneapolis Code, allowing for on-premise roof signs, two different types of signs depending on the height of buildings, and to return Chapter 520 to the author. Staff determined that no changes was needed to that part of our zoning code. So with that, I'll move items two and three for approval and postpone item one.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender has moved to postpone item one on the zoning and planning report and move items two and three. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick clarification for Councilmember Bender. For item one, it's being postponed for, is it one cycle? Is that what the motion is?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Frye, it will go back to zoning and planning on the next committee meeting.
And that's the entirety of the motion, the entirety of item number one? This is for the McDonald's, adding the additional lane?
Thank you, Council President. And Councilmember Frye, I believe from our city attorney and clerk that it automatically goes back to committee, but I'll let Mr. Casey clarify.
Mr. Carl?
Madam President, if the motion is to postpone, that item would remain at this level with the council. If it is the intent of the chair to reclaim that in committee, the motion should be to remand it back to the ZMP Committee for further work.
No, I keep, I think it makes more sense to postpone the item.
Keep it here. Keep it here?
That works for me.
Okay, all right. So the item then, or the motion then is to postpone item one on the council floor and move forward items two and three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?[1757.75]
Next item then is a new business number one amendment by Councilmember Bender, and she moves to amend the clerk's report of ordinance introductions by striking the listed author for an ordinance previously introduced relating to the traffic code, adding bicycle lanes to the list of prohibited parking and stopping places, and disallowing a parking and stopping exception for vehicles receiving and discharging passengers in bicycle lanes, and expanding the requirement to provide bicycle facilities in new development projects, and then substituting her name, Councilmember Bender, and she moves that the ordinance be removed from the report of the city clerk and remanded to the proper standing committees having subject matter jurisdiction. Any discussion then on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a new business by Councilmember Andrew Johnson, who moves to amend the clerk's report of the ordinance introductions by striking the listed author for an ordinance previously introduced and pertaining to Title 10 of the Food Code, non-motorized vehicle, food vehicle vending, excuse me, and pertaining to Title 14 relating to liquor and beer, amending mandatory food service requirements, and substituting his name, and then moves that the ordinance be removed from the report of the city clerk and remanded to the proper standing committee having subject matter jurisdiction. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. I just, on this motion and the ones that we just passed and this whole process, I just want to commend council leadership and the clerks officer, whoever took this initiative to clean this up and get things reworked. This is something I think in previous times we might not have really gotten to until June, July, or August, or who knows. So I really appreciate the organized way we've done this, and I appreciate the, my colleagues here for taking those ordinances that they think were still valuable to carry them forward. I appreciate it. And I'm certainly supporting this motion of Frye's motion here.
Okay, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President, as well as Councilmember Gordon. I think a large degree of the credit actually goes to my aide, Heidi Ritchie, who took a lot of the initiative in cleaning this up.
Councilmember Liddon? Sir? Oh. Any further discussion on these? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Carroll, for bringing this forward and helping us decide which ones were important to work on and which ones were important to save. So I thank you very much for that work. Councilmember Gordon, you're right. Any further discussion then on the ordinance introductions report? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. And actually, I think we may have missed getting a notice in for an ordinance change. So is that appropriate to do now? If I have that specific title and chapter in which we'd like to notice this, or should we save that till next time?
You'd have to amend the agenda and, or excuse, yeah, amend, move to amend the agenda, and we've gone through the motions, so we'd have to... Well, Mr. Carroll, tell me.
Right. Madam President, a motion to amend the agenda at this point would require a two-thirds majority vote of the council in order to bring that item through, and then we'd have to consider the process, and it would require a supermajority vote to bring that forward. It might be easier in the next cycle.
Thank you, thank you. It's not time-sensitive, so we'll bring it back next time. Thank you.
As long as it's not time-sensitive, that's good. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Council President. I apologize if this is not the appropriate time to say this, but since you said public announcements, we are having a presentation by Hennepin County next Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Midtown Farmers Market site. The official address is 2225 East Lake Street, and that's where the county will be talking about their vision to buy the 6.5-acre lot across from the Y to work with the neighborhood, Corker Neighborhood Organization, to develop that site. So we're really looking at this as a placemaking initiative for the entire city that will support urban agriculture, green initiatives, mixed-income housing, street-level restaurants, maybe rooftop restaurants. So I invite any council member that's interested in coming to hear about that project to come on down.
Any further announcements? That's a perfect time for this, Councilmember Kano. Any further announcements? Seeing none, motion to adjourn is in order, and it's a motion to adjourn to 315 City Hall for the purpose of discussing a legal matter.
So moved.
All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.